The table order has been updated. We'll call the meeting to a quarter and stand for the president. Sue, please.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salzgut.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here.
All right, so the consent agenda tonight, we've been given an updated agenda as item A, the South Broadway project removed, and resolution attached for item C under new business. So for A, motion to approve of those changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes.
I'll support.
Any discussion on it? Sue?
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzgut.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen comment, item's not on the agenda. All right, old business A is gone, old business new A proposal one, Michael.
Yes, as asked by council, I've been, I've put this back on the agenda for continued discussion. State officials and voters will be voting on this tomorrow, and as a state, we will know, we'll have an idea tomorrow where this lays out whether it passes or it fails. If it does pass, there are going to be, obviously, you're all very, I think you're all very educated as to what's going, what the steps are going to have to be done for us here in a very short period of time. However, Dick, Dick is here this evening, City Attorney, Dick Went, he's here this evening. He's just going to kind of go over a couple of things for you. There's a lot of constitutional, because this is a constitutional referendum, this, there's a lot of things that are different with this in comparison to what your normal legislation is when a bill passes. The way this was written, it's even causing a little bit of, maybe that confusion may not be the word, there's a lot of gray area in it, so I'm going to have Dick just kind of go over some of those things for you, just so you're aware.
Good evening. I'm going to, if I talk too long, just tell me, Mr. Mayor, that I talked too long.
You got it.
So I'm going to try to review for you this proposed ballot proposal and what your options are. And Mike is exactly correct, it's not very clear. If any of you have looked at the ballot proposal, you should know that, well, that I think is three paragraphs long. What you really would be doing and are voting on, and people are voting on, is to amend the Constitution to incorporate what's called the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. And that is a nine-page document, a very, very small type. And so that in itself leads to, and has led to a lot of confusion, and as Mike has suggested, a lot of gray areas where there isn't any clear answer to, quite honestly, and there probably won't be for some time if the proposal is in fact adopted. And I'm not taking a position, I need to say that upfront, I'm not taking a position in favor or against the proposal, but I'm just providing you the information. If you think of the proposal as two separate proposals, I think that's the best way to look at it. The first part would be the personal possession and use of marijuana, recreational marijuana by individuals. And the second part of it would be the establishment of marijuana establishments, or the creation and establishment of marijuana establishments. The first part, which I'll kind of review for you, that's in if it passes, and there's nothing that the city could do, the city council can do to opt out of that, and I'll talk about opt out a little bit later. But those provisions, the liberties and the restrictions of those provisions are in if the ballot proposal passes. And what they say in just sort of an outline form is if you're over 21 years of age, you can use, consume, purchase, transport, or process up to two and a half ounces. You can possess, install, and process up to 10 ounces in your home or in some place that isn't visible. It's kind of interesting because the Act says isn't visible unless you can see it with binoculars or in an airplane or a helicopter. It, you also can grow 12 plants within, again, some enclosed area within your residence for your, principally for your own use. You can give away or transfer up to two and a half ounces to someone else, your friend, as long as you're not advertising it for sale and selling it. You cannot, and here are some of the things you can't do, you cannot consume in a public place. You cannot obviously operate a vehicle under the influence of marijuana. You cannot consume marijuana in a vehicle within the passenger area in a public place, on a public road or some public place. A landlord can restrict the use of marijuana of a tenant, that is legal, it's up to the landlord who owns the property. An employer can refuse to employ someone who uses marijuana, can require a test for marijuana, and if it tests positive, can refuse to employ that person, and can terminate someone if it is a policy of the employer for someone not to be a user of marijuana. And then, the last thing that a person cannot do, they cannot use or possess marijuana in any public or private school, school bus, or correctional facility, or in any public place such as a park, a pathway, a trailway, or anything like that, that is strictly prohibited. So that's the portion that will be in effect if the proposal is adopted. And it's really related, again, to the use, the personal use of marijuana for recreational purposes. The second part of the referendum, the ballot proposal, deals with the establishment or creation of what they call marijuana establishments, and there are six different categories. And you've probably heard these before. There's the growers, the processors, there's the secure transporters, the processing centers, which is a retail store, by the way, a safety compliance business, and something called a microbusiness. A microbusiness is a small operator who can grow up to 150 plants, I believe, and either distribute them to purchasers or to a safety compliance location. And the theory behind that is, is that they wanted to, the proponents of this wanted to make it available to small entrepreneurs, if in fact there was any interest for small entrepreneurs. The, with respect to these businesses, there is this feeling, and again, this is this gray area, and you've heard this before, that there's a 10-day period of time that a municipality has to opt out. So if they don't want any of those uses to be within the city, the legislative body, the city council in this case, would have to opt out. And the theory is that you've got to opt out within 10 days, which becomes very difficult. And it's with 10 days, within 10 days of the ballot proposal being certified by the state Board of Canvassers, not the local Board of Canvassers, but the state Board of Canvassers, because it's a statewide proposal. So theoretically at least, you then have 10 days to opt out. If you don't theoretically opt out within 10 days, you're in. And there's this question is, well, if you opt out now, on a timely basis, can you later decide to opt in? I can't answer that question. There's no answer, the Act does not address that issue. I suppose there's an argument that you shouldn't be able to opt back in, because you only have a one-time opportunity to opt out. But I can't tell you that for sure, that if you as a council, assuming it passed, were to opt out on a timely basis, that five years from now, you might be able to opt back in if it were your decision to do that. So that's kind of, that's kind of the gray area. The, if you opt, if you do not opt out, you have the ability to do a number of things by ordinance. You have the ability to limit where these establishments are located, how many establishments there are, and you can establish a system of priority, so that if you have five applicants for three establishments, you can go through a process of selecting the top three. The thing that you can't do is if you, if you let establishments in, you can't exclude one establishment and put the other five in. You have to include all six types of establishments in your zoning ordinance. Couple things you should know about where they can be located, restrictions. One, they can't be located within 1,000 feet of a public or private school, or they can't be located in a zoning district that is purely a residential zoning district. So you can't amend your ordinance to allow them in a residential zoning district. Now, not to be confusing, if you're a private user and you're using it for your own purposes, you can do it in your home, you know, and that's likely where it would be done. The, how the process will work with these establishments throughout the state is that LARA, the state licensing agency, is given a year to come up with policies and procedures and a whole application process to process these applications. So they'll have to first be processed and be issued a license by the state. They'll probably take the full year to do that. They did that with respect to medical marijuana. It took that long or almost that long, it did take that long actually, before they had developed procedures. The Act says that if they don't do it within a year, then it defaults to each of the municipalities, and the municipalities then have to come up with a process within 90 days to license these uses within the municipality's jurisdiction. So municipalities are sort of the default, if the state would ever fail to come up with a policy, policies, procedures, and license applications and those sorts of things, it again falls back to the municipality. Whether or not that would happen is probably, it's not very likely, likely the state, it may take the full year to do that. So in effect, if this passes, city does not doubt, you would have a year likely to establish ordinance changes if you wanted to have certain amendments to the zoning ordinance. And it's probably mostly to the zoning ordinance. The only other area that they talk about is you can regulate signage. So that is the only other area other than location, if you signage. A couple of things about revenue that you should know about. The local municipality is entitled to charge a annual, Mike recommended this, an annual $5,000 application fee, which the local municipality, the city, would keep. There is a 6% sales tax that we all pay, that we apply here. It's interesting to note that 73% of the sales tax today goes to the state school aid fund, so very little is available for revenue sharing, for example, which is what we all, we all know. And then there's another 10% excise tax, so it would be a total of 16%. The 10% excise tax, 15% goes to cities, townships, and villages on a prorata basis, based on the number of facilities you have as a percentage of the total facilities. 15% goes to counties, based on the same prorata percentage. 35% goes to the school aid fund, and 35% goes to the state transportation fund. However, before that money becomes available at all, for any of that distribution, the state and the state agency, LARA, gets to subtract all of their costs of setting up the system and then operating the system. Plus, $40 million goes to, $20 million a year for the first two years, goes for research related to treatment for veterans and prevention of veteran suicide. And so, before it would ever trickle down to the local municipalities, all this other stuff would have to take place first. Questions on that? We'll talk about process next. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. You said that it might take the state a year to get everything in process. If they voted and they approved it, not that I would have it in my car, but if I had two and a half ounces, because the growing season is, I don't know, 12 months, if I was to get pulled over with two and a half ounces, even after the election? That would be illegal?
No, that's personal.
That's personal consumption.
Yeah, but, but the state hasn't grown it, I'm getting it illegally, because there's no place to purchase it today, right? So during that 12 months, if somebody was to get pulled over?
I see what you're saying.
Say that part of it, would then I be, not be, I'm just putting it out there just for conversation.
See, you can grow it, you can grow it yourself.
But still a year to grow.
No, no.
No, no, but it still takes a year for the plant to become mature enough to smoke it. That's what I'm saying.
I see.
So I'm, so I'm just bringing it up as a, that you brought up.
The short answer is, I don't know the exact answer to that question. I would fall under the Medical Marijuana Act if it was in your locked box of your vehicle secured in the trunk, I think you'd be okay. Without trying to determine where it.
Exactly, because you know it's going to be illegal.
Yeah.
Contain it first, till the growing season first, I would think.
Other questions? Anyone else?
So.
I've been researching, obviously, a lot of this about what causes have been impacting California's, Washington, Chicago. One of the questions I have is, I don't know if it's allowed here, one of the communities I studied, what they did was, they, it seems like in those, in those states, they give the municipality, I think they give them a lot more control as to what, how they can dictate it. But one of the things I noticed was that they would, they would regulate, they didn't allow for any commercial operations on a safe route to school route. Now, my question is, is if there's any safe route to school routes in a commercialized zone, would, are we allowed under zoning to?
I don't think you can. I don't think you can. I don't, I don't think that you can do that. You could, you know, it's prohibited within 1,000 feet of a school, but if someone's outside that 1,000 feet and properly has the two and a half ounces and it's a route to a school, I don't think you can adopt a local ordinance.
You couldn't set up, like, you couldn't even say no commercial, like it was a commercial zoning district where these are, where you couldn't say no commercial?
Oh, you could do that.
Yeah, that's what I.
If you can select where these establishments may be located, so you can do it that way, you can say in certain zone districts, it would be prohibited, or probably more appropriately, it would only be, you know, it would only be allowed within certain zones. And I suppose you could, depending upon where those are located and where the school bus routes are, you might have some ability to, to. The, the problem with that is, is you probably would agree, it, again, it's the personal, it's not the establishments that we're talking about here, but it's the personal use and the recognition that if that person complies with what's in the Act, you really can do anything about it. Okay, if, to another question, we'll talk about process.
Another question?
Yep.
Opting in. We're seeing a number of communities in Michigan already opting out before the election even takes place. If this council were to do that, state, and I'm not saying, I'm not going to make recommendations on this anyway, but state council, five minutes from now after this discussion, said we're going to opt out ahead of the election, is that valid?
If you assume that you got to opt out within 10 days after the Board of Canvassers certifies the election, in my opinion, no. Because you're taking an action on something that isn't in effect at this point. But so my answer would be, no. Now, remember that there is a body out there, and you've seen it, Mike, and lists, I don't know if you all know what listserv is, but city managers and, and city attorneys have exchanged emails back and forth, so there's buzz going on this every day, literally all kinds of stuff. And people, some people would take the position that the 10-day rule doesn't even apply, that you have until the one year that the state comes up with, and I, you know, in my opinion would be, that's probably not the safest position for you to take, because if you intend to opt out, then you may have lost that opportunity. So you need to follow the process sort of that's outlined. And here's the difficulty with it. You have 10 days, the proposal comes effective, as I said, 10 days after it's approved by the Board of Canvassers. You have to act within those 10 days. Let's assume it takes a week for that to happen. So let's assume that it happens on November 13th, seven days from the election, right? Seven days from the election. You have until November 23rd to adopt an ordinance, if you were going to adopt an ordinance. So number one, you'd have to call a special meeting. Number two, and this is where it gets really tricky, the city charter provides that an ordinance doesn't become effective until 10 days after it's published. Now, Tim, you're good, I know, but there's no way that you're going to publish it probably within that 10-day period. There is an exception though, that says that if you, as an alternative, you can post it at each one of the precincts. And so we don't have a precinct, any precincts other than one, so you would, in effect.
We have two.
Or two precincts, okay, two precincts. So you'd have to post it within each of the precincts that you've adopted this ordinance. Plus, you'd have to adopt the ordinance and give it immediate effect because of an emergency, and that would require a supermajority, that would require four votes. And that's four out of five, whether you're here or not, or serving or not. So I don't see. But again, just keep in mind that if you opt out, special meeting, declare emergency, requires four votes, can't publish it, you'd have to post it in each of the precincts, within that 10-day period.
I mean, we were here six months ago, kind of in the same position on the medical marijuana, and the council philosophically chose at that point to say we didn't feel it was right for Lowell. Personally, I don't see a change between this and recreational, you know, where we were before and now, so I don't, the chances of us opting in, I think, is pretty, so I think we probably would opt out. It looks like it's probably going to pass from the polls, but we really just didn't feel that that was going to be good for Lowell, to have those kind of businesses here and influence on our young people, so, you know, they can buy it wherever, Ann Arbor, there'll be other communities that opt in, but I see us taking the same course with this that we did six months ago.
I don't think they've done a good enough job of answering questions before, like LARA's going to break their feet, because it's what they do. And you're going to miss the period, the 10-day period, before they have even the first answer. And I would imagine, in that listserv thing, for me, it looks like a lot of people are opting out. So I think LARA would be hard pressed to say, if you opt out and change your mind, you can't opt back in. I think that would.
Yeah, I think, just a couple comments on that. I think that most of you know that our firm is representing a whole bunch of municipalities on this issue. I think there are over 100 now that we're advising. And where you're seeing they're not opting out generally are large cities where these would most likely be a trap, you know, where people would most likely establish, big business would establish them, or college and university towns. I think you'll, you'll see some of that there. And then you'll see some rural townships that I think will see this as an opportunity for revenue, although based on what I just told you, I think that's kind of elusive. I don't know that it's that much money when you compare the additional enforcement obligation to replace the money.
I would argue that it's probably going to end up costing you money. Talking about police and regulating them, you get that $5,000 one time a year, great, but the trickle down from the state, I don't think is going to come close to covering what it would cost to keep them here and still keep what we're trying to do going.
So I think you're right. I think most, everyone is opting out except for that classification. I know Grand Rapids is not going to opt out, I can tell you that, and I know some college, university towns are not going to opt out.
Have you guys had any discussion on this, Jerry?
Very little.
Because I know that was the sticking point last time, is that we wanted to come at the medical marijuana thing as a community, not as a city and the two townships.
And just a point, by the way, on that, this doesn't affect medical marijuana, because medical marijuana would continue to be in effect if you ever wanted to opt in for medical marijuana, and that option's always available to the council going forward. The unfortunate thing is, to your point, Greg, is, you know, we don't know when the Board of Canvassers is going to certify, so we can't really set a meeting right now. So you're going to have to be on, be ready, you have to post a meeting at least 18 hours ahead of time, so we'll have to meet that requirement. We don't have to worry about, again, the publication, we can give it immediate effect and rather than publish, post it at both of the precincts. I'm sure when this all happens, if it passes, I'm sure the video will report what the communities are doing.
I know you can make a bold say whatever you want to make a bold say, because you've just got a number to talk to, but it looks like it is going to pass. If the election's tomorrow, if they take 10 to 12 days even to canvass it, that still puts our 10 days to opt out in the window of our next regular meeting.
Yeah, if it's at least three days, then we're covered by our next meeting.
So do you know, you have any idea what the state Board of Canvassers is looking?
No, it usually takes at least a week.
Is it 10 days? Does it say that we have to, for just 10 straight calendar days?
Because it should still, I would think, even if they take 10 to 12 days, because I think the proponents are going to be pushing the state Board of Canvassers to get done quicker than that, I would imagine, so they can get started. But I would imagine that the period to opt out will, that our next meeting's going to be within that 10 days, so you're here, then you've got two, four, six, even eight to 10.
Right.
So yeah, this.
So that meeting will be.
It'd either be the beginning or the fourth or fifth of that ten days, so I think we'd be fine.
Yeah, the timing's almost perfect for us. It couldn't be any better for the election being tomorrow, gives us thirteen days.
Remember, you gotta take the action, plus you gotta do posting, and if you be able to do that, you can do it the next day or something. So, yeah, or that day you're doing this posting, you got it.
I think Greg's right, I think. I don't think a lot has changed. I would argue that the medical marijuana is even better than the recreational. We chose to opt out of that. Um, I don't know, I just don't think it's for us. Personally, I don't think it's for us. I mean, if people wanna do it in their basement, great, but... I don't, just, I don't, I don't think it's a business for what we're trying to sell here. Plus, if you're looking at enforcement alone, you already got a bunch of cops doing more work than you shouldn't have to. I mean, they had something else that applied for what, for five thousand dollars a year?
By the way, anyone violates, um, the personal use possession, that's now a civil infraction, you're in a criminal infraction, so...
Let's see, maybe retroactive anybody who's already been prosecuted, right?
Should be, no, no.
How, I'd like to see the opt-out proposal put on the agenda for our next meeting, and we can... If it doesn't pass tomorrow, at some point, we can just remove that, remove the agenda, right? Right, and if the, if the Board didn't, if the Board of Campusers didn't camp by nineteen, then we could set a special meeting for, and we'll deal with it in the ten-day window.
With your direction, opt, pair a formal ordinance so you can have it available to you.
That work for everybody here?
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion, Dick, or we just need a motion when we opt, and I'll, or if we opt out? All right, so proposal one is done. New business, item five, letter A, amendment one and two to the sewer ordinance, Michael.
Sure. In August, the city issued an industrial pretreatment program permit to Lighthouse to begin transferring their process water to the wastewater treatment plant. An issue surfaced which our current ordinance does not allow. Approximately the first six months of their pretreatment operation, the effluent they will send to the plant will contain biochemical oxygen demand, otherwise known as a BOD, of up to forty-five hundred milligrams per liter per day. Our current sewer use ordinance restricts an IPP user to load twenty-five hundred milligrams of, per liter, per day, of BOD. In addition, the permit has a requirement of no more than eight hundred pounds per day of BOT they can submit to the plant. Going above those amounts places them into the fine category of our current ordinance and will violate our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, or NPDES permit. This could force a revocation of Lighthouse's IPP permit. If you recall, this is the action that was about to stop the biodigester from operating. In this scenario, Lighthouse would be able to meet the eight hundred pound requirement per day, but not the twenty-five hundred, twenty-five milligram per liter day requirement. Our system can handle this in the short term if closely monitored while Lighthouse continues their upgrades. However, the city would be in violation of the ordinance and the NPDES permit because our standard, because of our standards if we allowed it. After continued discussion with SUEZ and the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, there are allowances for situations such as this where BOD collection is over the designated amount. DEQ worked with the city to develop an ordinance amendment along with policies and procedure modifications which do allow this and do not cause concern for violations of the permit. The ordinance and policy and procedure modifications were submitted to DEQ, and they met their approval. Attached is Resolution thirty-one dash eighteen, which are revisions to our wastewater treatment plant policies and procedures to address this. And ordinance eighteen dash oh five adding section twenty-five point two oh five A to chapter twenty-five of the city sewer use ordinance. City attorney can explain the ordinance at length, and then Brian will be able to speak to you regarding the revisions of the policies and the procedures that you need to be aware of. If approved, Lighthouse would be surcharged, um, for up to the forty-five hundred milligrams per liter for the additional pretreatment required by the city. Lighthouse would not be into the fine category unless they exceeded the forty-five hundred milligram per liter of BOD or the eight hundred pounds per day loading requirement. Uh, I'm recommending Lowell City Council approve Resolution thirty-one dash eighteen approving sanitary sewer system policy and procedures for determining the industrial allocation portion of wastewater treatment plant maximum, maximum allowable headworks loading. And ordinance eighteen dash oh five adding section twenty-five point two oh five A to chapter twenty-five of the sewer, city sewer use ordinance. So I'm gonna turn to Brian real quick, and Brian can just explain to you what the policies are changing at the plant to address this.
Basically, what policies are gonna do is help us to track, um, the loadings to the plant. The township contributes, the city itself contributes, um, in this case, Lighthouse is also gonna contribute. These policies just are a way to track and, and show how much is, is coming in, and how much is allowed to come in based on how much the plant's able to just, uh, to treat. Hopefully, that makes sense.
When I did the math, Brian, I didn't do my calculations quite right. My son informed me that I didn't, so I owe him a thanks. At the end of the day, what they're asking to do is, the volume and the, the load coming into the plant is gonna be pushing it up towards the maximum of what the plant can handle.
Correct.
If the townships allow more development to come in and a processor somewhat similar goes into Lowell Township or Virgin's Township, that forces a plant expansion because the system just won't be able to handle the extra volume.
Correct.
Can I elaborate on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this situation that's in front of you is basically for temporary situations like six, oh, approximately six months. This just allows for those situations. They will have to go back to the ordinance standard in a, in a very short period of time, and we're gonna monitor it, and if they don't, and if they don't, if they're not meeting what they need to meet, they have to either pull back or they have to stop sending us the waste. If Lowell Township, if, if, if they wanna do something and it's within their capacity requirements, this isn't gonna restrict the township from that.
They're buying them time to upgrade.
Correct, we're just trying to get back to where they.
Okay, because when I read, when I read all of this, I didn't, I didn't see any of that in there.
Sure.
So I was assuming this was gonna be a long-term process.
This is a short, we, basically, this is, this is not, for larger systems, this is not something that's, to our knowledge, is what's, is unusual. And that's why we actually, we copied ordinances from Holland and Grand, Grand Rapids, who deal with this all the time. This is a short-term situation. They're gonna get on, they're, once they get everything up and running, they're gonna be get within their normal requirements, other, and they're gonna be held back to the original standard. But this just allows them that time rather than the continued, the practice that they're doing.
So then will this resolution then revert back to the, to the old numbers? Or is it gonna stay at the new numbers we're gonna put out?
No, this is just, this is basically something that's gonna be temporary. This gives him, Brian, the opportunity to allow this for temporary situation. If Brian determines that this is getting over and above, then Brian has the ability to revoke, to, to take action to make sure that you, that compliance will be around.
So the ordinance continues?
Yes.
Gives Brian the chance, gives Brian the choice to say yes or no, case by case by case.
And, and, and he could, just so you're clear, and if in fact it's, it's not working, he has the authority then to say it's not acceptable any longer. And in fact, um, Lighthouse and, um, our treatment plant, Brian, are going to be monitoring that. And so if it gets to a point where it can't be handled, then they'll have to truck it, like they're doing now, and take it away if it don't work. And the other thing is important, so the township understands this, is the township has purchased seventeen percent of capacity in that treatment plant. In running the numbers and doing the calculation, Brian has reserved that seventeen percent, so it won't eat into their capacity.
Yep.
And, and, go ahead, Brian, yeah.
What the city contributes, what the township has allocated is, is all in those policies and procedures. And that shows us what we have available left over, which is what we're allocating to Lighthouse.
And you, you've left yourselves to flexibly.
With some safety factors also.
Some safety factors.
Um, obviously, I'm not an attorney, just a dumb plumber, but I don't see anything in here that limits us timewise in this ordinance. Is there something? This looks open-ended to me.
It's, it's a modification to the NPDPS permit, and it's up to the operators to make that determination, is how long it will, it will be in effect.
And that language is in, is there more than we're seeing here, then?
No, that allows him, this language in the ordinance and the policy allows him to give a special allocation for a period of time.
For six months.
That he determines.
Right now, he can't do that.
He has no authority.
But I just don't see anything that puts the timeline in there.
No, that, the timeline, Brian, what, you might wanna talk to what you expect to be.
I anticipate doing no more than six months. Come six months, if, if there's an extension needed, then that conversation can add that time. But I'm not looking at anything more than six months at this point.
Okay, but we won't be in a position where they said, "Hey, you agreed we could do this. There's no end date in this document, you can't stop us now."
We control that permit.
Yeah. Just wanna make sure we're not back in the corner.
You're actually gonna issue a document that will say that it's for six months.
Correct. There is a part in the ordinance that's, uh... User which requests a special discharge allocation must sign a written acknowledgement consenting to comply with all terms and conditions which may be imposed by the city. Such acknowledgement shall be provided by the city and must be executed by an authorized representative. That form will dictate the timeframe.
That's great. Now, it mentions here a surcharge that they'll be paying, but not a fine. Does that cover all the costs for you with additional testing and stuff?
Yep, surcharges are meant as, they'll pay extra money because it costs us more to treat those higher loads. That's, that's the, that's the bulk of the, of the surcharge.
Brian, I've seen your reports when you've been to us monthly, so, like, so will that be something to be checked in weekly? You'll see that report from what they're putting in the system weekly? Is that a monthly thing?
Yep.
So you'll be able to see a chart of, you know, consistency up or down, where they're, where they're making a move, especially four or five months from now versus today?
Right, their, their samples, their sample frequency and the reporting frequency is dictated in the discharge.
Can you report, can you give us a separate line? I have just four of what that looks like in your reported, you know?
As far as?
What, they're, not their surcharges, but what, what they're contributing into that? Are they hitting their goals, are they doing that part, you know?
Anything's possible. I'd be fine to put it in there.
I just like to keep tabs of what housing.
You're looking more like Andy Graff.
Right, exactly, yes, yep, here, here's from, from November, uh, six months from now, and you can see that chart, have a, you can see what they're doing.
To, to Greg's point, uh, I might, in the ordinance, and by the way, the rules and procedures are referenced in the ordinance, so they're there because of the ordinance. It does say in the ordinance, "The city reserves the right to reduce or deny a special discharge allocation if total pollutant discharges are near or reach the maximum allowable headworks." And so there is that flexibility to say, "You can reduce it to zero if, if necessary."
Great, we just had some bad experiences in that neighborhood and trying to make sure that everything goes well here.
Yep. Any other questions for Brian, Mike, or anybody?
Hey, Brian, I would expect that the surcharge areas will be pretty empty.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead and tell us.
The dirtier is the water, the more the surcharges are gonna be.
Any further discussion, or?
I look good. I look good for a motion first for Resolution thirty-one eighteen.
I'd make a motion that the city council approve Resolution thirty-one eighteen approving sanitary sewer system policies and procedures for determining the industrial allocation portion of wastewater treatment plant maximum allowable headworks loading. And ordinance eighteen dash oh five adding section twenty-five dot two oh five A to chapter twenty-five of the city sewer ordinance.
Um, second. Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And then we need a second motion separate, right, for the eighteen oh five amendment?
So?
I'll support.
Discussion on the second part? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
All right, item number be thirty-two eighteen, there's for the M dot contract for wayfinding signage, Rich.
Uh, Michigan Department of Transportation requires a contract, a special trunk line maintenance permit in order for the city's contractor, Universal Sign, to install the wayfinding signage within the M dot right-of-way. The contract and permit outline M dot's terms and the city's requirements for installing signage within the trunk line and cover such items as project execution, costs, and ongoing maintenance of the signage. M dot is requesting a resolution be adopted authorizing signatures by the mayor and city clerk to formally enter into agreement for the signage installation work. I recommend the city of Lowell City Council adopt Resolution thirty-two eighteen and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute contract number eighteen five four four nine, permit number five five one seven seven, to proceed with installation of wayfinding signage within the M dot right-of-way. Attached behind that, council communication, by the way, is the resolution. And behind that then is the M dot contract and permit.
This is just the finishing touches on the wayfinding sign project that we've been discussing.
Yeah, just so you're aware, we met last week with the, with Universal Signs at a pre-construction meeting. They're gonna be getting in touch with the bridge, probably in the next couple of weeks, so we can stay. It's gonna take them about eight to twelve weeks to construct the signs. They've just finished the design to where they get their shop prints, so we can go into construction. So we'll see something probably by the end of the year for, uh, the signage.
All right. Well, I will then move that we approve Resolution thirty-two eighteen and authorize myself and the city clerk to execute contract number eighteen dash five four four nine, permit number five five one seven seven, to proceed with the installation of wayfinding signage within M dot right-of-way.
I'll support.
Anything else on that? Suzie?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Eric, uh, item C, twenty-five sixty Boles Road, RFP, Michael.
On October nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the city opened two bids for the purpose of the twenty-five sixty Boles Road property. During the bidding process, we set a minimum price of twenty thousand dollars of the land based on the valuation from the assessor. The bids are from the following: Lowell Charter Township, twenty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars; Virgin's Broadband, twenty thousand dollars. Last summer, Virgin's Broadband discussed what they would like to do with the property. At the time, the council was supportive of the endeavor, as it would make the property taxable and provide a small amount of revenue, new revenue to the city. During this process, I was contacted by Lowell Township on their interest in the property, as it is adjacent to their new park and would be a tremendous benefit to them. I agree both entities have a great idea for the use of the point-four acre parcel, and the community will benefit from either endeavor. The issue for the city is, while the township is the high bidder...